Hi. Have you cleared this meeting open? This meeting is been declared open? 6:31. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm really impressed by the crowd. And I welcome the viewers that are watching from home. This evening, this is a regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting. That meeting is open at the present time. Through the pleasure of allegiance, and then I'll ask for a motion to close it, recess it, I'm sorry, recess it and open the public hearing. So if we all stand for the...
My pleasure allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one thy nation, one thy God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to recess...
I make a motion to recess the Finance Committee meeting to open the special... Next, special hearing.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. On February 26th, in Milford Daily News, a legal notice was posted. And it reads as follows. "The Millville Finance Committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 6th, 2013, at 6:30 PM at the Longfellow Municipal Center to address the financial article included on the special town meeting warrant. The special town meeting warrant will be held at the Millville Elementary School on Monday, March 11th, 2013, at 6:30 PM." That was submitted by myself, Chairman of the Finance Committee. I'll ask at this time, Mr. Willett, to read the article.
All right, this is from the warrant for special town meeting. Article 1. "To see if the town will approve $3,866,801 borrowing authorized by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the purpose of paying the cost of replacing the roof and its pertinent components at the Blackstone Millville Regional High School located at 175 Lincoln Street, Blackstone, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required education program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Said amount to be expended at the direction of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. In any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from MSBA will be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 57 and 74/100% of eligible approved project costs as determined by MSBA or to the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, submitted by the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee."
At this time, I'll open a public forum for explanation, for comment, or questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Want to introduce yourself?
Kim Shaver, my superintendent, Regent School District.
My name is Harold Gould, and I'm the attorney for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Perhaps I could give you a little background. A little over a year ago, maybe a little longer, the Massachusetts School Building Authority opened up a new program called an Accelerated Repair Program. And the funds for that program cover replacement of roofs, replacement of windows, replacement of boilers. That was the original... These were the original components. And at some point during this process, they also added science labs. Back probably at least a year ago, the district, on behalf of the town of Blackstone and the town of Millville, with the approval of both towns, submitted what is called a statement of interest to the MSBA for the purpose of seeking funds to replace the school, the roof at the regional high school. Just by way of information, at the same time, SOIs were submitted to replace the roof at the John F. Kennedy School in Blackstone and the A. F. Mahoney School in Blackstone. But Millville has no financial responsibility with respect to those two schools, so we're dealing strictly with the high school. And this project consists solely and exclusively of replacing the roof at the regional high school. No windows, no boilers, no science labs. Just replacement of the roof. The SOI was accepted by MSBA. We were put on the eligible list, and we started the process of dealing with MSBA. Some months ago, when the project had been fully approved and accepted by MSBA, and there were a number of districts that applied originally, I think it's like 79 districts applied originally. It was whittled down to about, what, 35 districts?
And then 24.
And then 24 survived. And the Blackstone Millville Regional School District survived all of the checkpoints. And except, I think, for the city of Worcester, was the only school district that had three roof projects... That had three projects approved. And our three were all roof replacements. The five in Worcester consist primarily of replacing windows and boilers. So there was a lot of work that was put into the whole process. We worked well with MSBA. And after having been accepted, we were given... We were assigned a project manager. And the project manager was a company called Arcatis USA. Arcatis USA is one company in a huge conglomerate that is headquartered in the Netherlands and has something like 13,000 employees all over the world. And even in the United States, the US component has got like 22 offices. And here with us tonight is Mr. Richard Sitnick, who's sitting right here, who is from Arcatis and is our project manager for this project. We were also assigned an architect, an individual named Murray Wolf, who was a partner in the firm of Di Maricini and Wolf in Boston. We had hoped to have Mr. Wolf here tonight, but he's on vacation and out at the office for the week. So that's a little bit of the background of why we're here. The project, the first thing that had to be done was the preparation of a feasibility study with schematic design plans. Schematic design plans, very preliminary sketchy plans. They're the first step in a five-step process. You go from schematics to design development to construction plans to bidding, doing the actual work, and the administration of the contract. The proposals that were submitted to MSBA for each of the three schools, but this one, I'm going to focus on this one, were accepted as submitted. Accompanying budgets had been prepared primarily by the OPM based on a valuation of the project and a cost estimate prepared by a company that does cost estimating. And that budget has been prepared. And that figure that you see in the warrant article, is a figure that has been approved by MSBA.
Is that a not-to-exceed number?
Yes.
Well, that's not really the number.
No, that's a budget number. You won't know the true figures until you put the project out to bid. And we're not at that point yet. If everything goes well with the town meetings in both towns and the referendum in this town, the next thing will happen is we'll be entering into a project funding agreement with MSBA. And then we'll be authorizing the architect to continue the process of developing the project, taking it from schematics to design development to construction documents. And at some point when that is completed, those construction documents will be put out on the street with invitations to bid. And when the bids come in, we will know the true cost of doing the project. But I know that the figures that have been prepared were prepared by a professional evaluation firm that does nothing but this. Let's see, what else do we have? Well, following the approval of the feasibility study, the schematics, and the budget that had prepared, the next step was for the district school committee to incur debt to fund these projects. They did that on January 17th of this year. The towns, both towns, were notified within the seven-day period. And I think we've... I served the papers on the town on Tuesday, the 22nd, of the purposes for which the... Of the fact that they incurred the debt, the purpose of incurring the debt. And accompanying that notice were four forms. A form of article, a form of motion under that article which did not contemplate a debt exclusion, a form of motion which contemplated debt exclusion, and also a ballot question if the motion was one that would require a debt exclusion. I can tell you that Blackstone will not be requiring a debt exclusion on its portion of not only this project, but the other two projects. You people are going to go the route, as I understand it, putting on the floor the motion that calls for debt exclusion. And the debt exclusion is going to take place on April 1st concurrently with your town elections. We have... We had the fiscal agent for the district prepare an amortization schedule of the $3,866,601 debt. The breakdown is... Blackstone's share of that is 71.14%, if my memory is correct. Let me pull it out. Blackstone's share is 71.14% of the debt. And Millville's share is 28.86% of the debt. And what this amortization schedule shows you is what the impact is in Millville based on an average house appraisal of $252,000, which is the figure that I got from the assessors.
Yeah, roughly, in the first year, it would be around 14 cents per thousand. 14.4 cents per thousand.
Yeah.
$244 is $100,000.
This is based on a figure of $252,000. So the average house impact is going to be, in the first year, it's only going to be... How many people have copies of this?
I was fortunate enough to get one.
Do you want some, please? I brought plenty of copies.
Now, I have a question that might be a better answer by your project manager. I mean, $3.8 million is a lot of money, even for a roof that size. Is this assuming that the underlayment and some of the structure is going to need to be repaired also? Is that why the price is so high?
Well, the structure doesn't need any repair. There's no repair that's going to be done below the roof line.
Okay. But I mean, I watched the YouTube video, and, you know, I saw a lot of puddles and a lot of low spots. And that's typically an indication of the underlayment under that rubber roofing being compromised.
I'll let Mr. Sitnick talk more about that. But we'll tell you, for example, that there are three roofs on that project right now. And all three roofs have to be removed to get down to the steel decking.
Okay. So it will be from the steel decking up? So the foam, the underlayment, you know, whatever is underneath that rubber roof is all going to be replaced?
That's correct. The reason for the costs as they are presented is that this is going to be a complete removal and replacement. As Mr. Gould had indicated, there are three existing roofs up there now. The new code requires that the architect has to design to the stretch energy code, which means they're going to be putting in insulation, pitching insulation to roof drains. They're going to have to add roof drains. They're going to have to... They're going to have to remove HVAC that's on the roof right now. They're going to have to raise the curves because what's happening because of the new stretch energy code is you're actually getting thicker insulation than you'd normally would. So that obviously compounds the whole thing. Now, when you start working against vertical walls, so you have different sized roofs. You know, you have roofs here, and then you go up and you have another roof. The through-wall flashing obviously will be affected. So any kind of through-wall flashing that's on the roof now won't be able to get reused because it's going to get buried with the new insulation that's going to go up against it. So for instance, you might have four inches of insulation up there now. If it goes up to eight inches, that means the flashing that's there is going to get... It's going to get buried.
So a lot of new flashing will have to be cut into the brick and...
Oh, and actually, we have... We've done a number of these roofs in other localities. And you actually have to have a mason contractor in there. You're cutting out maybe three or four tiers of brick and then putting in your flashing, and then you have to go back in there and brick it up. So it does complicate things. And then, of course, on top of all that, now that you're actually... The coping that you're going to be using on the exterior of the perimeter roof is going to... You might have had coping caps that might have been four inches, six inches or so. Because now you're actually raising it, and so you're probably going to be putting more blocking on the perimeter of the roofs. You're coping in the edge flashing. The fascia is going to probably extend maybe a foot or a foot and a half. So it complicates things. But this is what MSBA wants, is they want to address energy codes and put in the proper amount of insulation, so...
I've asked the question once already, and I'm probably going to ask it about 27 more times, but $3.866801 is a not-to-exceed number.
Okay, let me go through that number. So that's right now our budget. And we started this process in the fall of last year. We brought the architect on board. They did a preliminary study. And then they produced a report that they then generated a roof plan with and said, "Here's our recommendations. Here's what we need to do." With that information, and initially, we had recommended that it go to a three-ply built-up roof. But because of the costs of a three-ply built-up roof, and MSBA only reimburses up to an amount of $22 a square foot.
24.
24, I'm sorry, it was 22. They essentially said the towns of Blackstone and Millville will be responsible for any of the costs beyond $24 a square foot. So we pulled back that analysis and said, "We're not going to go with a three-ply built-up roof. You know, that would be the best roof that could go on that", for obvious reasons, given the history of those roofs and the repairs that took place two years ago. And we recommended a PVC roof. So these right now are schematic plans, and these are the budgets that we've put out there. That budget includes the designer's costs. That includes the OPM's costs. And of course, it includes the construction. It also includes a contingency amount. So we do anticipate that as we start to strip off the roof, there might be some metal decking that's rotted. We might have to replace that. We hope, we hope that we don't have to use the contingency.
What is in there for contingency percentage-wise?
On a percentage, I don't recall. I can actually... I can give you the actual breakdown. So overall, we're looking at 3.86. Of that, there is a construction contingency of $163,000. And then there is an owner's contingency of $30,600. So roughly, $190,000.
And the only reason why I ask that question...
5%.
5%?
Thank you.
The other reason why I continue to ask that question of it being a budget not-to-exceed number is we're going to be presenting this at a town meeting. We're going to be presenting it, presenting the information for the debt exclusion question. We need to be able to tell the townspeople, "We're giving you this figure. It's not going to be more than that. Might be less, not likely, but it might be less. But it's not going to be more than that."
Right.
And with that being the number, this is what it filters down to you. Now, it's going to seriously jeopardize our credibility if that number went up higher than that.
As would our credibility.
Absolutely. And what that does is that blows out of the water any future possibility of debt exclusion, any future possibility of override, any future possibility of any of these other issues that are going to raise taxes. So, you know, we need to be able to adequately and effectively and efficiently tell these townspeople, "This is what it's going to cost you. Plan on it being this much. This is what it filters down to your personal situation."
And we can't predict what's in the market. You know, we're going to start the process, hopefully after we get a positive vote for the debt exclusion, that we can then sign our architect up to finish the plans. We can put them out to bid. And then we can find out what's in the marketplace. Because MSBA is putting a lot of roof projects out there, we've seen the cost for roofing go up. And it's a direct result of supply and demand. We take a conservative approach when we look at estimating. And so we'll take a look at a cost per square foot. We had an estimator go through the schematic plans and said, you know, "We've identified the fact that you've got to relocate the HVAC. You're going to have to strip off the entire roof." You know, it's very detailed. We have about 15 pages on the high school and 30 pages on the complex building. And we do take a conservative approach to make sure that everything is considered, everything is thought of, and that we're also taking a look at what the cost is in the current marketplace. And so we feel confident that the numbers are within the range that we're looking. And of course, we do add contingencies. But I can't sit here and say that that will be a maximum price. We work to get it to that point. And so we work with the architect to make sure that, you know, that we're not overdoing it. This is obviously a... This is a roof project. It's not a building project. Building projects get more complex because you have more items in them. With a roof project, it's pretty straightforward. You have a roof, you strip it off, you put a new one down.
It's a finite project.
It is very finite in comparisons. Right, to, you know, the components that go into a whole building. So we do have confidence that we are at the right number. And of course, we benchmark that cost per square foot on the overall in comparison to some of the projects that we've completed. And of course, these are projects that are now finished. We have data that shows the cost per square foot on an existing roof versus what we're projecting it here. And so we've come in on the higher side for budgeting purposes. We do hope that we do bring in numbers that are lower for roofing projects.
I mean, the only problem is, is obviously, this is public information. And at that point, when you put this out to bid, you've already tipped your hat.
Clearly.
You've already shown your hand, "All right, this is what we've... This is what we've got." And so, you know, a roofer's going to come in at $3.825 million.
Well, that's the...
Because, hey, we know that they budgeted for this.
That's right. That's the issue with public funding, is that that information is available. The only thing that works in our favor is that there is competition. And so one guy will look at it and say, "He's at..." He's budgeting a number of 3-point, whatever. And his competition might say, "Okay, so I have to beat Charlie over here. And so if he thinks he's going to come in lower than that, I'm going to come in one step lower than him." And so that we do hope that, you know, the competition does work in our favor.
But again, you have to remember, these are budget figures. And we won't know the true cost until we hit the street. Now, there are going to be two other price evaluations of this project as we go through the rest of the construction document phase. At the 60% mark, another evaluation, cost evaluation, is going to have to be made of what this project is going to cost based on 60% drawings. And at the 90% point, where the drawings are very close to going out to the street, there has to be another evaluation, cost estimate made. So those cost estimates will start to give us an idea of how solid the figure is at this point in time, these various points. Hopefully, we'll come in on the budget.
And Mr. Gould brings up a very good point. That is how we control the process. Our architect goes to work and starts putting his plans together. And then we require that he provides us with an estimate at the end of the design development phase. And if it's trending up, then obviously, we have to take a look at it and determine what we have to do to pull it back. Either value engineering, or we have to modify the scope. And then, of course, there's one last shot before it goes out to bid, and that's at the end of the construction document phase. We get another set of estimates, and we evaluate whether or not he's on the target. And we feel confident that we can put it out to the street for bidding. We also have... We have bid strategies. We take a look at whether or not we can incorporate alternates, you know, whether it's a deduct alternate or an add alternate, so that if things come in higher, we can then say, "Well, let's pull this portion out, and then we will be right at that estimate." Or on the flip side, that we say, "Let's go in on the low side. And if the numbers come in well below where we are, then we can add those things that we wanted to put in but weren't sure whether or not they would do." So we do have strategies for managing that, too.
I'm John Lawrum, Selectman in Millville. I've got a couple of questions on... The Finance Committee is going to have to sell this to the town and explain to them exactly where is money and why it's so much. I think for the best interests of the towns, you be there.
We plan on having...
Because there's going to be questions that we're not going to be able to answer.
And this is next Monday?
Next Monday. I think you were already planning on that.
It's in our...
Because I see things in here like miscellaneous electric, $5,000. Somebody's going to go up and go, "What's miscellaneous? Where are you going with this? Take a Skylight out, $5,000, and put it in storage? What's that about?" You know, these are questions that people are going to ask. They're going to try to cut this. In order to... For the people to approve it, they're going to be skeptical. So we're going to have to have the answers to all their questions.
I understand.
Because this is going to be, you know, it's a big number.
It is a big number. And again...
I mean, I understand it's for a good cause. It's for the, you know, for the school, for the children. But there's a lot of things in here I see, and I question.
And that's understandable. If you could... The process that we have to follow with the MSBA, which is the funding agency for all the schools here in Massachusetts now, is that we have to put together a budget based on very little information. So we're trying to think of anything that might possibly happen. And then we put it in as a budget and submit it to MSBA.
I understand that, but a lot of people are going to turn around, like Paul said, and says, "This is really not the number. This is not to exceed number. What is the number?"
Right.
And they have to be educated and give them an explanation why it is the way it is. I mean, like you said, codes have changed. There's different things you need to do. I see you need to put a new ladder in. That might be a code change. The ladder has to be wider or a different pitch or whatever. People don't understand that. But when you get that all in there, would you say it was miscellaneous $100 and something thousand?
$90.
$190. They're going to turn around and say, "Okay, how do you justify another $190,000?" And this is what this board and the Selectmen are up against. And we have to make sure we have the answers.
Now, my understanding is, and I've been telling this to people over the last week or so, my understanding is we either vote yes and get a 57.74% reimbursement from MSBA, or we vote no and we pay the whole amount.
MSBA, or we vote no, and we pay the whole nut.
That would be correct.
And that's another thing, that's another thing we have to explain to them.
I mean, basically, it's pay now or pay more later.
Exactly.
If, right now, we're in the queue for MSBA, and we'll remain in there. If the voters turn the project down, we will make notifications at MSBA, and we'll come out. We will not be allowed back in if something would change. And as we said in the video, our insurance carrier has noted that our, that we have major problems on our roof, it needs to be replaced, and if something would occur, they will not cover the damage.
Well, the fact that you've started the process has already opened you up to the liability of...
Is that something they had in writing?
It is, and actually, that occurred prior to us beginning the process.
No more plausible deniability.
I want to...
It's out there. It's already been established, so it's a problem.
I just want to make sure that it's something that was put in writing, and if somebody questions, we can say, "Here's the paper."
Actually, this, it was put in prior to us beginning the MSBA process, and if you recall the storm two years ago, we had some significant damage on our...
General November 11?
Yes.
January 11?
And, we were first turned down for the repl, the temporary fix over the gym, because it had been noted on our insurance policy that there was major concerns with the gym roof. We continued to have discussion with Armaya Insurance, and we were able to ask, they were able to temper, put a temporary repair on the gym roof. Had they not, we would have shut the gym down at that point because of the leakage.
And that was covered under insurance, that temporary?
That was.
I remember that, it was, what, a year ago or a year and a half ago?
Yeah, two years ago, yeah.
Three, two years ago.
And that certainly did save us at that point. And right now, the reimbursement is at 57.74%.
Reimbursed 57.54. Well, that was, that's one of my, one of my concerns with the town, is that we're going to have to explain to the town in depth that they vote yes, and there's, there's a reason for it because of the payback, like the finance committee said, and a lot of people don't understand that. A lot of people probably won't even know.
Mr. Buckley?
Michael Buckley, I was one of the Blackstone representatives for the regional school group, but it's fine. Can we focus on the finances just for a couple of minutes? And my question, my comment is, it's a $3.8 million project, and of the $3.8 million, 57% of that, 57.47% is going to be reimbursed. So, it's net, to the two towns, of about $1.6 million. And Millville's obligation out of that is about $460,000. So, that's really the number that Millville's looking at, divided over 20 years and obviously interest costs and so forth. Now, I think you have a, I think you have a trial run of an amortization table, and I don't know what it's going for percentages. So, you know, if we, if we really look at, gee, Steve, I really wish I could read that. Anyway, my point is, don't get, don't get too hung up on the 3.8 million, that, you know, really, the town's obligation once we end is about, is under $500,000. Even as I've advertised over 20 years. Just like when you paid $9,199 to build a school, my brother let way, at significantly higher reimbursement, but the town obviously had that obligation, and I think that you probably paid in, in, well, reimbursement was $633,000 annually, because of that extra year, and I think that Millville was probably paying between $270,000 annually for the elementary school for that 20 years. Now, the only debt that the town or the district has is the remaining debt on the Fred Cottick Middle School, which I believe will end, will sunset probably in 2017 or so. I, I don't think you've got, all have any more years left on that. And I think that you're probably paying under $100,000 now. I don't know where the back page was, Steve. Don't get me wrong, okay? Under $100,000 yearly for that obligation. So, now, this obligation here would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000, between $25 and $30,000 annually.
It starts, it starts...
Okay, yeah, it starts at 38,000, it starts at 23.
All the way to 23.
Yeah, so that's, it's kind of supposed to be, so, you know, I'm looking at the average impact on a house of being, at the worst year, of being $35,000. That's roughly what, 75 cents a week for every, for every house? So, I mean, I, I don't think, I think that's, while the number is important, the high number, I think it's important for the taxpayers of Blackstone, of Millville and Blackstone to realize that really, how much you're really going to have to pay for this. Obviously, a 20-year note would, would assume that that's a 20-year life of a roof, and Mr. Sittnick can certainly tell me if I'm all wet there, but I would think that it'd be in excess of 20. I think you'll find that the roof was, was relayered in probably 1990 or so, so it's about, about 23 years. You know, I don't think it was a full reconstruction, because that's why we probably have the multiple years. And I don't know how, was there another, any other, in the first 20?
It was layered twice after the originals, because there were three roofs on the roof.
You know, I think if you really look, if you, if you come at it and look at it, and that we got, you know, it's probably a good investment, because you, we own, voters of Millville own 30% of that facility, and the land there is part of the region, just like you own, you know, 30% of the, of the, of the Hyman School as well. So, I think it's just, it's just a good investment, and, you know, we're, we're pretty much, as you probably have seen, I was up on the roof floor there yesterday, and it didn't pay yet, so it is pretty safe. But, I'm skinny Mike now, but I do what I used to be. But anyway, you know, the point is, is that it's, it's a big investment. Replace that building or have to go down alone, you know, that'd be, that'd be awful if we moved this opportunity and then go back into the bottom of, bottom of the list.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mike, but the thing is, is we need to make sure the people at the town meeting understand that.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to say, I wouldn't want to focus too much on, you know, that's why we have professionals to say, "Yes, we need $5,000 to, to do a certain, you know, exercise in there." But, what is, just like I would watch on, is what seems to happen to be my bottom line? How much do I even have to pay in taxes in Blackstone for, or in Millville when I was living here, if, you know, is it a good value?
I understand that, but a lot of people look at the whole aspect of it. They're going to chop this thing, and they're going to look at every little thing, and there's going to be a lot of questions. So, I just want to make sure that we have the answers to that question, so they feel comfortable.
We do have a little bit of a problem on the 11th, because your town meeting is at 6:30, and Blackstone's town meeting is at 7 o'clock, so...
Well, I guess we win, because we're first.
But, we're not...
So, you better be there.
I'll be, I'll be at one or the other, he'll be at one or the other, she'll be at one or the other, and the architect will be at one or the other. We haven't figured out where, who's going to be here.
Well, if we present it right, it shouldn't be more than a half an hour, right?
Well, hopefully not.
Theoretically.
Oh, man, I wish we were thinking.
I know, huh? Big time, we do a lot of talking that night.
Just to pick up on something Michael said, while the debt was incurred for $3,866,801, the actual amount that's going to be borrowed is $1,634,111. And the reason for that is that unlike the old program that was run through the Department of Education, the School Billing Assistance Bureau, in this instance, under MSBA, the 57.74% is given to us as the project takes place. So, by the time the project finished, we've got basically 57.74% of that $3,866,801 paid.
So, it's not, we don't have to outweigh and then get reimbursed, it's getting paid out, out as it goes?
Right.
Well, that's definitely a positive.
So, that, that explains why you're only borrowing the much lesser amount as opposed to the gross amount.
What is the estimated life of the new roof?
It depends on what's, what's selected, but typically, a PVC roof is a 25-year life.
Thank you.
Because you can't go up there and start, you know, running snow blowers and shovels and things like that.
What's the, excuse me, what's the warranty on that roof?
It's, it's the, the life of the roof, yes. Yeah, you, when, when the architect writes his specifications, he will write a warranty period that has to run for the life of the roof, which probably be 20.
Is that pro-rate warranty? Or, full warranty?
I believe it's a full warranty. I, I can't say for certain, but...
Laboring materials?
It would be, yes. Yes. Yeah. But, of course, as, as you run over the 25 years, then it becomes, you know, it, it becomes more of a pro-rater.
Comments from the audience or questions? I want to thank you very much for, for your support and being here this evening. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we want to read the debt exclusion question, or is that in our...
Why don't we, why don't we read it?
All right.
Excuse me.
The, the question that is going to be on the ballot is as follows. Shall the town of Millville be allowed to exempt from provisions of Proposition 2.5, so-called the amounts required to pay the town's allocable share of the bond issued by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the purpose of paying the costs of replacing roof and its appurtenent components at the Blackstone Millville Regional High School located at 175 Lincoln Street, Blackstone, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto? So, that's the question that's going to be on the ballot on April 1st. And it's either yes, and it costs us $611,000, or no, and it costs us $1.14 million.
What's a 611? We've talked about 470.
Where, where does 6 come from?
With the financing cost. There's a cost of financing.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, if you look at the, if you look at the amateur, the amortization schedule, it's, the total's about 611.
I'm presuming that's with interest, finance cost.
What's the interest rate?
Well, it's projected, this, this pro forma is based on, let's see, the band is projected at 1.25, and the, the permanent borrowing is based on 2.75%. Right now, bands are coming in at about .09, less than 1%, and I'm told that the permanent bonds such as this are coming in below 2.75. So, but we picked 2.75. Initially, when the pro formas had been prepared, the fiscal agent had used 4%, and we had a discussion with them, and they said, "No, it's, that's too high. Let's do 2.75." So, that answer your question?
Yeah, but I don't know what a ban is, with the B and M.
It's, it's a bond anticipation note. It's temporary borrower, borrowing on a promissory note in anticipation of having a bond issued.
Yeah, if I'm asking what a ban is, someone else in the town's going to ask what a ban is.
Sure. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Motion to close the public hearing. So, move.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.